Okay.
That a mayor?
Yes.
Good evening and welcome to the Glendale City Council meeting, June 7th, Super Tuesday. May we have roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Garpetian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Sinanian.
Here.
Mayor Devine.
Here. Next item.
Next item will be the flag salute delivered by Councilmember Garpetian, followed by the invocation delivered by Senior Chaplain Al Garsalazov of Glendale Advanced Medical Center.
Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Dear God, we are glad to be here this evening at this city council meeting, and I pray, as always, that you will bless our mayor, our city council members, employees and staff, as well as the residents of our great city. Today is a special day because it's an election day. Various individuals will be elected and nominated and asked to serve in different capacities. I pray that the right people, the right individuals will be chosen, individuals who will allow us to flourish and prosper and enjoy our civil and religious liberties. There are also some initiatives and measures that will be considered. I pray that with regard to these initiatives and measures, that the right decisions will be made. So bless us here this evening, continue to bless our city. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Comment.
Thank you. Next item.
Next item, as listed on the agenda, is a report of the clerk. The agenda for the June 7th, 2016, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, June 2nd, 2016, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item.
Again, next item listed would be agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, June 14, 2016, under presentation and appointments. I believe we are foregoing that. For anyone wishing to know, it will be on the agenda. It will be posted on a bulletin board outside City Hall as stated, but it will also be available online on the city's website.
Thank you. It is a very long agenda, and so we are saving time this evening by just announcing that it will be posted. So please make sure you do that or check the Internet. Thank you. Next item.
Items including minutes following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
The item went pulled. We're good.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'm sorry?
May we pull 4B after the consent calendar?
Okay. We'll pull 4B. I have--
I'll move the rest of the item.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Please read 4B into the record.
4B is General Manager of Glendale Water.
If you would like, Madam, we can take that under action items.
I thought you were going to discuss it.
Well, we would want to discuss, and we can do that under action items. It was inadvertently put on consent. This revolves around the request to dispense with competitive bid. You'll understand why we would do that as part of our power purchases.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
But that should be on the action item.
Next item, please.
City Council and staff comments.
Any other comments? Council?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll make the same call upon our residents as I did during housing meeting. It's election day. Still not too late. 6:07. You have almost two hours to get to the polling stations and vote. This is probably the most precious civic right that we have, which is sort of a prerequisite of every other right that we have as well. So please go vote. Express yourself. It doesn't matter who you're voting for, but do make your voice heard. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mayor? Sorry?
I'd just like to state that this, first echoing the remarks of colleague Mr. Sinanian, but I'd like to state that this Friday, apparently there is going to be a groundbreaking for the Nexon Lex project. I don't want anyone to wait for me because I will be boycotting such a groundbreaking. It is the Godzilla of all development projects which have been approved in the city of Glendale. They were able to get away without paying the full freight on the development impact fees, and the unavoidable negative impacts that the building have make it unconscionable for me to celebrate the beginning of construction of such a behemoth. Thank you. I would also urge my colleagues to boycott as well.
I just have one comment. I had the privilege on Friday of meeting former President Bill Clinton at the invitation of Congressman Adam Schiff, and I would like for my colleagues and everyone to know that he accepted a Glendale pin from me, and it will be in his jar of pins that he has collected for years and years in his museum on his desk. So we are now a part of President Clinton's collection, so it was quite a privilege. So please, again, I reiterate, be sure that you vote today, and I hope that you've all done your research and that you will vote wisely. Thank you. Next item.
Next is the community event announcements. This is a three-minute portion reserved for community event announcements. We also have following that portion reserved for three-minute general public comments for those wishing to forego the five-minute.
Thank you. And I have one card, and Roberta Medford.
Hello. I'm Roberta Medford, the Glendale Part of Montrose residence, and I'm not at the dais, so I can say, "Get out there and vote no on N." You've got to eight o'clock. Now, speaking as the president of Glendale Beautiful, I am here to invite you to our last luncheon of this year, and it is next Tuesday, a week from today, Flag Day. It will be held at the Casa Adobe de San Rafael, which you all know. We help the city of Glendale by providing the docents and doing programming there. That is at 1330 Dorothy Drive in Glendale. Social time will begin at 11:30. Bountiful picnic lunch, including Dino's Fried Chicken at 12:00 noon, and then a program including the installation of next year's officers, which we're so grateful that Mayor Devine is going to do for us in her busy schedule, will be at 12:30. So any of the rest of you, I know what a horrible day Tuesday is, but if any of you, any of the rest of you can come, that'd be great. And to anyone I'm speaking to live or on tape, please do consider coming. The program then, after the installation, will be a talk called "How Glendale Saved California and Changed the Nation," from a time back when we really had something to fight over, yet we managed to conclude it peacefully. The talk is by Michael Crosby, who does have local connections, and he has quite a distinguished volunteer record as docent and very knowledgeable about local history, and an author about Valley history in particular. So we're very glad to have him there, and I think it'll be an interesting program about the Glendale, the two Glendale Adobes and our part in U.S. history. The RSVPs go to Sharon Wiseman, and she is at 1-818-248-4967, or you can email her at And we would like the RSVPs, if you please can, by Friday, so we know how much fried chicken to get. And anyone that's here tonight, flag me down, and I'll give you a copy of the flyer. I already gave them to council. So I don't think I've forgotten anything. The price of the lunch is $18. People are always welcome to come for the program without eating, but it'll be a nice lunch, and it is a little boost for Glendale Beautiful's rather modest budget. So thank you very much, and see you next week, and don't forget to vote.
Thank you. Dave Ferguson.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council and staff. My name is Dave Ferguson, and I'm the president of the Sejourner Youth Orchestra, which provides music education, group lessons, and instruments to at-risk kids in our city. Just wanted to give you a quick update before I talk about an event that we have coming up. I know that you'll be interested to know that we were able to take all of our children to the Grammy Museum earlier this month because of the donation from the L.A. Fitzgerald Charitable Foundation. They paid our admission and provided a bus for us to do that. We also just recently received a grant from the Community Foundation of the Verducos, which is allowing us to provide instruments to the kids. Many of these instruments were donated by the community and have been refurbished, but we're also able to buy new half-and-three-quarter size violins and violas with over $9,000 that's been given to us. And today, I was able to accept a donation of an $1,800 oboe that was donated to us. Our summer music camp started this week with providing 100 hours during the next five weeks of music education and rehearsals for the students. This coming Friday, we will be having a benefit with Morene Der Casarian, who is the soprano from Glendale Community College and also the Conservatory of Music in Pasadena, who will be presenting the benefit concert this coming Friday evening at 7:30 p.m. at Roosevelt Middle School Auditorium. 100% of the ticket price has been, can go to us because everything has been donated for that, and so if people would like to come and get tickets, the tickets are $22 for general admission, only $5 for any students up to age 25, and $75 for reserve seat tickets. Those can also be purchased on our website, or we will have them available at the door. If people would like to help us out with the $8,000 for the summer music camp, we'd be delighted to have them make a donation on our website, www.cyo.org, mycyo.org. And we're also happy to have people provide camperships instead of just the sponsorship that we're calling them camperships. We've had foundations and individuals who've already provided these. Those are $400, which pays for one child for the entire summer music camp. So thank you very much for your support. I can get some to you tomorrow in the office. I provided them at the Crescent Valley Alliance last Friday, and they were gone within five minutes of everything that I brought. I was really grateful to the members of the Alliance. Thank you.
You have a good turnout. Next item, please. That's all my cards.
We have one card for the three-minute portion reserved for individuals who wish to speak for three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
But not five minutes.
Okay. Marco Torres.
Good evening, Mayor. Madam Mayor, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Marco Torres. I am the Director of Operations for the Urgent Care Clinics here in the Glendale area, part of the Adventist Health Hospital System. And today, I'd like to just talk to you a little bit about what we're doing. In partnership with the Glendale Fire Department, we are part of the alternative transportation services. It's a pilot program where we're actually diverting patients from the emergency room to an urgent care center. We've partnered with the Fire Department to triage the patient upon the call, determine whether it's an emergency room visit or an urgent care visit. Upon that determination, they are bringing the patients to the urgent care clinic where we can treat the patient. One of the reasons why is we're trying to promote quality care without the wait. Wait times are among the highest in the state for emergency room visits. For example, in January, the overall wait time at Olive View from entrance to exit, it was a high of eight hours. The other local facilities are having emergency room visits here in Pasadena of average four hours. At Huntington Memorial, Kaiser Foundation, Willen Hills, four hours. L.A. Olive View, UCLA Medical, Silmar, six hours, and then L.A. Harbor, UCLA, just to give you an idea, seven hours. So these are staggering wait times in emergency rooms being bombarded by unnecessary visits. So one of the things that we're doing here in the Glendale area with our urgent care facilities is developing a new system where we've created efficient processes to maximize the visits. Currently, our average visit time is about one hour and four minutes, and that's from registration to depart. Our average wait time is anywhere from zero minutes to 15 minutes. And how we're doing this is through an online system where patients can now actually go in to our site. I don't know if this will allow me to hit the, if you look at the top, it says myahphysician.org/urgentcare. It actually allows us to take the patient to a website where they can actually, upon bringing this website, it will show the wait times at all four of our urgent care clinics, and it will allow the patient to make a decision which urgent care they want to visit. In addition to that, once they see the wait time, they can actually click on the location that they want and save a spot. For example, we've had instances where moms have called in and wanted to bring their children into the urgent care, but not until after they picked them up after school. They've been able to save a spot and actually make the visit, allowing them short visit times and wait times. So these are just some of the services that we're providing the community and want to get out to the public. So thank you for your time.
You, sure. Councilmember Najarian.
I have a quick question for you. Verdugo Hills Medical Associates on Glendale Avenue, does their sign indicate, does it say urgent care?
Yes, sir, it does.
It does? Okay.
Yes. Yes. So we have actually the VHM Verdugo Hills Medical Associates Urgent Care on Glendale Avenue. We also have the Rapid Care on Chevy Chase, 801 Chevy Chase. We have a new location in the Montrose area, and one outlier, which is in the Burbank area, and they're all servicing our communities.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone who's visited the emergency room in the last six months will attest to those timelines that you just spoke about. I was at Adventist in January with my daughter, and I walked into the emergency room, it was like a scene from a post-apocalypse movie, people laying all over the place, just, you know, there for hours and hours. So this hopefully will alleviate and cut down on the times within which they can be in and out.
Yeah. I think if you do get a moment to visit us on our website, again, myahphysicians.org/urgentcare, it'll bring up the map and all four locations and their wait times that will allow you to decide which clinic you want to go to, and even save a spot. So then by the time you get there, you know, even if a crowd comes in, your spot is still saved for the reserved time.
You know, we're very fortunate here in Glendale with the forward thinking of Glendale Adventist and having, taking over all of these urgent care facilities to help our residents. And besides these four, I know there are others here in our community, and I have to say, they're all manned by very good doctors, and people should not be reluctant to go to urgent care. It's really, you get the best care and the quick care, and it's excellent. Thank you so much for providing us with this information.
Shows you the wait times at each location, and our patient satisfaction scores right now are at about a 97% to 100%, and our Yelp reviews are about a star four, so we're getting some good reviews as well.
Yes. Great.
So thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next item.
Next item is under action items. Well, actually, shall we go back to the table? Going back to returning to item 4B from the consent calendar, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Glendale Water and Power Annual or the Purchase or Sale of Energy Services. B1 is a resolution approving renewal of annual authorization for the city manager or his designee to enter into contracts with the purchase or sale of energy services not exceed five years in duration and dispensing with competitive bidding.
Thank you. Mr. Ochoa.
Yes, ma'am. Just very quickly, each year we come to you with this item. The reason why it is a request to dispense with competitive bid, as our energy and oil, natural gas traders are making deals, we limit them to a period of time per our risk management policy, but they need to be able to make deals as those deals arise, as they can hedge whatever our positions might be. As a result, as you might infer by the title, we don't quite have the ability to go and do a full procurement process, and so we request that you give us the authority at one time at the beginning or at the end of the previous fiscal year, heading into the next fiscal year, to dispense with competitive bidding and be able to negotiate deals and exercise deals in the city's name for the purchase of all these various energies and commodities as it pertains to GWP Electric. If you have specific questions about the practice or the policy that is in place, Mr. Zern can answer those for you.
Anyone have a question for discussion? Would anyone like to motion? Move this item?
I'll move 4B1. Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item, under nine hearings, is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power Regarding Glendale 2015 Urban Water Management Plan. This is a public hearing and plan of adoption. A1 is a resolution adopting the Glendale 2015 Urban Water Management Plan.
Thank you. Now open the public hearing, and Mr. Ochoa or Steve Zern?
Well, we'll have Mr. DeGhetto come forward and answer any questions you might have, but as it says in the staff report, every five years, we have to do an urban water master plan. Any purveyor of water, supplier of water, that deals with more than 3,000 customers or distributes more than 3,000 acre feet of water has to provide this type of plan. It looks at all of our demographic trends. It looks at impacts that relate to drought, that relate to our providers. In this case, MWD would be the agency that we partner with. And so we send out our plan to all of those interested parties and also make it available to the public, invite them to this public hearing. But as you might expect, on a five-year kind of long-term plan, we get some comment, but not too terribly much comments from the other water agencies. But certainly, if you have questions about the plan or about the comments that we do or don't receive, you can ask those directly of Mr. DeGhetto or Assistant General Manager.
I have a comment. Ms. Friedman?
I would like the council to consider having staff bring back an ordinance that would require developments to retain water on-site. Many other cities across the state are doing this. It's not difficult to do. We've had our staff tell us that this is something that is, given the type of ground and soil we have, is a fairly easy accommodation to make, but it's very important to do this to get water into the ground and into our aquifer. And, you know, if we're going to have development, I think it's really important that we mitigate the impact of development, and this would be a really good first step in doing that. So I would like to have somebody second having staff bring back that report, and we can decide then if there are costs to developers or what they are and whether it's worth doing. But in my book, if someone's going to develop, they should do it responsibly, and retaining water on-site is really the least of it. And it's not, you know, it's not stopping people from building in the cities that do this already, all around the Southland.
Garpetian? Did you, were you--
I have a question. When you say development, what do you mean by development?
Well, that's, you know, that's something I think that we need to discuss at a different time, but at least we should have staff come back and give us options. We can talk about whether it's, you know, anything or whether it's, you know, Santa Monica, I believe, already has that ordinance that you have to retain water on your property whether you're developing or not, you know. We could do anything from that to larger developments, you know, but I think we should get the input from staff and hear what other cities are doing, hear what's possible, hear what the costs are, any difficulties or not difficulties, and also hear maybe even from some of the buildings that have taken it upon themselves to do this already. So I know we have some that are LEED certified and have done this, so I would just like to have staff bring back the information, and then we can discuss what actions we want to take.
Okay. I'll second that. Mr. Zern, can I ask you a question then? In the future plans, in the study, in the plan, was that mentioned?
No, ma'am, not here. To be quite honest with you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this probably shifts a little bit more towards the stormwater management side of things, so if we do this, it'll be primarily probably Mr. Galanian, and my staff will work with him, and also maybe community or community development as well. So, but it's not a normal, recycled water is in there, but not water retention.
A quick question. Is there an ordinance, a state-level ordinance, in place at this time for larger developments, for 10,000 square feet or larger, or an acre site or larger, that you have to recapture the stormwater?
Councilmember Garpetian, not to my knowledge. It is in part of the NPDS plan where it is used as one of the measures that you can use to meet your requirements there, but nothing, to my knowledge, that specific.
To--
But it's certainly an option. On-site retention is always an option.
Okay. I have a couple. Did you get a second on that?
Got it from you.
Okay. All right. I have a couple of questions. Does anyone else have a question? My colleagues? Couple. Short answers. This is mostly for the public. All water, all of our water meets EPA and Division of Drinking Water standards.
Meets or exceeds.
Meets or exceeds. Continuously meets the state and federal drinking water regulations.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. For those of us that are always getting questions about, how much, are we using more water now that we have all this development here than we did, let's say, five years ago?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, we're using less water today than we were. Now--
Even with all this development?
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I thought I read in the report. Thank you. And I thought it was really important, one more question about the recycled water potential that we have. I think that's really interesting.
Yes.
Can you just give me a real short sentence on or explanation of--
Yeah. Madam Mayor, members of the council, the availability of water through the Los Angeles Glendale Water Reclamation Plant, there is more water than we're using right now, so it's kind of a combination of finding the end use and developing our infrastructure. But there still lies some potential there. So we will continue to look and seek out opportunities to further develop our recycled water system.
I was really impressed with the fact that you do have a lot of plans for how we can get or get more water production for our residents. I thought that was interesting. Okay. Anyone want to move the item?
I'll move the item.
Second.
What? Did I didn't close the public hearing?
No.
Close the public hearing. Okay.
Moved in second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. There were no cards submitted for this portion.
Thank you. Next item, new business.
Najarian, new business.
What happened? Mr. Najarian?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I move that council hereby authorizes the city attorney to enter into a retainer agreement with the law firm of Rotan and Tucker, Phil Cohen, to advise and assist the city attorney on a matter. In addition to other provisions, the retainer agreement must contain a fee cap for work as assigned by the city attorney.
I have one as well.
Your second.
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 Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. There were no cards submitted for this portion.
Thank you. Next item, new business.
Najarian, new business.
What happened? Mr. Najarian?
Yes. Madam Mayor, I move that council hereby authorizes the city attorney to enter into a retainer agreement with the law firm Northern Rose Polbright LLP to advise the city of Glendale in connection with the possible issuance of bonds for the proposed repowering of the Grayson Power Plant. The agreement should include a fee cap for the handling of said matter, and the form of the agreement shall be subject to the approval of the city attorney.
Second.
Can I just say something about that?
Yes.
So that we don't get an avalanche of angry communications somehow, assuming that we've okayed the repowering of Grayson. This is hiring someone to consult us on whether to repower or whether it's a good idea to repower, so on and so forth. So thank you for that.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Garpetian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Sinanian.
Yes.
Mayor Devine.
Yes. Next item, please.
Next item is oral communication. There were no cards submitted for this portion.
Thank you. Next item, new business.
Najarian, new business.
What happened?
So thank you for that.
Roll call?
Councilmembers Friedman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Sinanian?
Yes.
Mayor Devine?
Yes. And do I have a motion for adjournment?
We'll do adjourn. Second.
We are adjourned. 6:32.